I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's your work. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I would like to get a motion to go out of normal business of order, order of business.
So move.
Motion by trustee Kors.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to move to our first action item, which is a resolution of the Board of Trustees approving appointment of Mario Verantes as a full-time police officer. I would like to thank you, Mario, for an excellent job that you did for us and your promotion to full-time officer. I'm very proud to welcome you to the force full-time. As you know, I was there and gave you your diploma and the ceremony, and it's a proud moment for me and for the chief and for this board and this village. So, welcome. Welcome to the police. On that note, I need a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank the mayor, deputy mayor, and the rest of the village board for your continued support with the police department. I've known Mario for a long time. He started as a PCO for us 2003 to 2009. Life kind of took him in a different direction. Now he has a beautiful family. Obviously, he has a lot of support within our department, as you could see here tonight, and we got a good one. So, very proud of him, and I look forward to him being a huge part of the department. Very excited and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always good when it's a good reason why the room's full. It's a buzz, too.
Okay, can I have a motion to go back into normal order of business?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Kors. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on November 12, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on November 19, 2024.
So move.
Motion by trustee Kors. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us now to our department committee reports, and we'll start out with Charles and the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. So, reporting through October, almost halfway through our fiscal year, and things are going well, you know, nothing persistent with the past months. Recent activity, you know, I've noticed this went out about the second half taxes. So, October, November, we see some good cash flow from the receipts on the second half of the property taxes, about $2 million bucks. So, that's good. And that'll continue in December and January. We just sent out our renewals for the dock contracts. So, that money comes in pretty quickly as well. So, even though there's relatively low activity levels in the village at this time of the year, generally speaking, cash flow is still very good. And as usual, I want to give a shout-out to the building departments. You know, this fiscal year to date, five months to date, they're 30% ahead of last year, and on a calendar basis, almost 50% ahead of last year in terms of revenue generated. So, they've done a great job managing that workflow and continuing to build the coffers of the village. Expense basis, generally speaking, expenses are in line with our budget. One big item that came up recently that's on the docket tonight for budget amendment is the street lighting project. We got a final bill, kind of, even though it was built into the original estimate. This project has been done for a while, and the last month or so, they sent the bill, their final bill, for $90,000, plus $90,000, bringing the total project to $485,000. So, unfortunately, we didn't build that until, but we had thought that we were done and everything. So, we need you to approve that so we can...
What's that from, from East Hampton Town?
No, this is from New York Power or...
And why did they bill us?
It was for the LED light project.
I know what they're talking about, but why would the utility bill us?
That's not the utility.
No, but not the utility. It was the company that installed the lighting, the contractor from the utility that installed the lighting. This was, yeah, it was an estimated cost that has now, they finally billed us, like, you know.
They did more than or something.
There was some extra work that was done, and we knew about it, but they didn't bill us until just now, so.
You know, we finished that, that's your bill.
I still keep asking for the numbers to see how much we're saving. We got one brief bill that we saved over $1,500 in a short period of time, so. We're waiting to get that full figure to see what the savings are, but it should be in the thousands or tens of thousands, hopefully.
Plus the bulbs last that much longer, you're not going to have the cost of maintenance.
Also, also take into consideration that the Wi-Fi system that we're installing is working off of these lights also.
Yep.
The other thing I want to bring to your attention on expenses is we just finished our insurance renewal process. So, you know, that's a large ticket item for us. It's probably $600,000 plus $1,000 for the whole package. Came in a little bit higher than we expected in the budget, not a manageable amount. But the real headline is our costs are going up double digits. Maybe just over there, almost 20%. So, at that level of spend, that's $100,000.
You're saying strictly for insurance purposes, right?
For all the village's insurance.
Does that include health insurance and liability?
This is business insurance, liability.
Okay.
Flood.
When we did take another look at the flood, our flood coverage because of the situation with the extra flooding that's been happening. So, we might, I think the police station is one of the areas we're going to cover that wasn't covered before, right?
It's a big ticket item, and the increase in dollars, it's almost a year-over-year, it's $100,000. So, to put it in context, when we increase our taxes at, within the cap, that raises about $250,000, $280,000. So, this alone uses up half that tax increase. So, you know, there's a lot of pressure. We know we have a lot of good things we want to do. And when, we have limited funds because just our uncontrollable expenses, you mentioned the employee benefits. Those are, you know, those are also going up, close to double digits, so.
And these are questions that every municipality is facing. Every time I meet with other mayors and even the governor, and we discuss this, I always bring up the point, what can we do to curb these costs, whether it's some form of deregulation or oversight? Something has to be done. If we're paying somebody at the DPW $60,000 to do a job, how is he supposed to find housing? Because it's not just $60,000, it's another $35,000 for his healthcare. There's other insurance that we would have to pay. These funds are going out the door, not directly going to that individual to help him, to sustain him. So, it's a bigger problem throughout all the municipalities.
All municipalities enter into individual contracts. There's no joining together of municipalities to try and negotiate. You know, five points would be a big deal in all of this when you're looking at double-digit increases.
Sure.
And that might be something that we should look at, and the way things are going, we'll be forced to look at.
Well, there might be, there might be regulations in place that don't allow that. That's the problem.
Okay.
Yeah, are we allowed to shop the insurance?
Well, there's another problem. So, now we're getting to a bigger issue here.
But it's a hard insurance market, also going up for private contractors, private companies as well.
So many of them are withdrawing.
Yeah.
Such a flood insurance.
That's your report? Thank you, Charles. Do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kors. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. That brings me to my report, which is the police department, fire department, and the ambulance corps. Before I read these numbers, I just wanted to say this is the end of 2024, and I wanted to personally thank our police officers, our EMTs, our volunteers, and the ambulance corps, and then the fire department for an outstanding year. These are our residents that are in not just the village, but in our fire protection district and our school district that are volunteering their time and saving lives, helping people that are in desperate need. So, I wanted to personally thank them for their service on behalf of this board. So, that brings me to the police department report for the month of November 2024. The Sag Harbor Police Department had 755 calls for service. We had 10 aggravated unlicensed operation. We had 10 suspended registrations. We had two DWI arrests. We had one arrest warrant completed, and there were nine motor vehicle accidents, bringing the total to 23 arrests for the month, two DWIs, and 123 uniform traffic tickets were issued. And that brings us now to the fire department. In the month of November 2024, the fire department volunteered for over 996 man-hours during the month. The officers and members of the department responded to a total of 46 calls for service. These calls included four mutual aids for structure fires. We had three motor vehicle accidents. We had two carbon monoxide incidents and numerous false alarms. And I just want to make a note on the carbon monoxide issues, and a lot of these structure fires smoking the residents, these are like, most of them are from heating equipment that's just being fired up because the season is, we're coming into the winter season. So, I would just remind our residents to please check your units, make sure that they're maintained, and call for service if needed by your companies, and make sure that those units are run properly. It's very important, especially gas-fired units. During the month of November, the fire department members continued their training with the final drill for the year at the Suffolk County Fire Academy in Yampank. Each time a member goes, it's four- or five-hour commitment. That's taking the trip up to Yampak during the training and coming back. A lot of times, these guys are, and women are given pizza. That's their dinner at 10 o'clock at night, so it's a big commitment. Finally, the members finished out the month by kicking off holiday season by attending the Southampton Parade of Lights. It was a great time to see all the children's faces as they see the fire trucks lit up with Christmas lights, and that's from our first assistant chief, Mike Aguirre. Thank you, Steve. That brings us finally to the ambulance corps. In November of 2024, the ambulance corps answered 56 calls for service. We had four work nights, two meetings, four training sessions, one drill, for a total of 797 man-hours. And that concludes my reports. That brings us to deputy mayor Hay with the justice court parks, open spaces, and the planning board.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll start with the justice court. The month of November, we had 128 vehicular traffic cases opened. We had one criminal case open, one civil case opened, 49 parking. So, if it's the first month this year, we're, actually, parking has outnumbered traffic cases. So, even though a lot of activities down in the village, the police are still out there protecting the streets, maintaining safe traffic. In addition, again, while revenue generation isn't the purpose of the justice court and traffic ticketing, this year, we did generate more revenues than any year in the past. And the hope is every year, we generate enough revenues through this process to sustain the justice court and the employees we have serving the village to keep the flow of traffic, keep the village streets safe. And this year was actually a good year for that, so hopefully, we can replicate this again next year. Just in terms of the engagement, the number of TCOs we have was very important. The morale of the force, the work of the force has been very good. Everybody's working really hard, and it's been evident in the results. I'll transition now to the Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee. Members of that committee, as many of you know, trustee Kane, planning board chair John Shaka, who's here, the chief, who just stepped out, Rory McAvoy, Drew Harvey, who's also on the planning board, Rachel D., the president of the Mash Park Board, Ned Hollander. Two things we've been working on a lot since the last board meeting, one was the County Road 79 project. There was another meeting that took place on December 5. Previous meetings were on November 6, September 12. Each one of these meetings is organized by Representative Ann Walco. She's been very helpful in orchestrating these meetings and bringing the people together. The meetings were attended by the Suffolk County, the DPW, the Department of Public Works of Suffolk County, and Southampton Town, as well as the members of the postact committee. In advance of this most recent meeting, we worked to develop a conceptual plan to present to Suffolk County at the meeting. It was really, you know, if you remember last minute, we hired an engineering firm to help us, LKMA, they did help us with this conceptual plan. Wasn't a lot of time. It wasn't a very rough idea. We wanted to get something in front of Suffolk County to get their reaction, to get them to weigh in on our ideas about altering their initial design proposal. So, part of, a lot of the concepts had to do with improving multi-modal transportation and safety. John Shaka, Drew Harvey were very instrumental in helping us think through ideas, and John, feel free to come up and speak to this to any extent you'd like to help us understand some of the things we're trying to work through. But one is, you know, creating a bike lane that took the bikers right through the intersection of Jermaine onto Main Street, as well as a safe turning lane down to Jermaine. Another was to accommodate new entrance to the park, proposed new entrance to the park, taking it away from the intersection of Brick Hill and Rowan, Jermaine, Main Street, and County Road 79, and moving it on to, south on to County Road 79, with traffic turning lanes exiting and entering to make a safer entry and exit to the park, as well as bike lanes that allowed cyclists to travel into the park, pedestrian traffic, crosswalks. In addition, new mid-block pedestrian crossings, in addition to what Suffolk County offered to both Jermaine Avenue and the proposed new bike entrance, a new entrance to the park. These are still very rough drawings. They were done by LKMA, and Drew Harvey did one of the drawings as well. Drew and John worked hard on making sure the bike lanes were robust. John, feel free to weigh in on anything.
Yeah, I, yeah, John Shaka, the planning board, you're right. These are early drawings. They're not, they're not anywhere near finished. There's a back and forth happening between me, we're having, trustee Hay referred to, which is a Zoom call, and then they go back, and the county is digesting it, and they'll come back to us with their version of what might be better. But from our perspective, we were looking for, postact, and my personal perspective, I was looking at what's the county strip initially, and they're offering narrowing the travel lanes, which slows traffic down, putting, this is on the county ground we're talking about, from between the traffic lights and, they're just going over, but narrowing the travel lanes by a foot, narrowing, putting sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, which is a good thing, but diminishing the shoulder by a few feet and calling it a shoulder, which is okay for a biker, for example. And so, Drew and I are keen to say, hey, let's make it more of a bike lane and make it safer for people, particularly when you're entering from Bridge Hampton into the village property, say, because that sort of denotes that you're now entering a village, much like you do when you come in from East Hampton on 114. You suddenly have a bike lane that sort of signals to people, oh, there's people living here, the bikers. So, that's the kind of thing we're talking about and discussing.
Quick question. How far north of Jermaine is the county going to continue before their project ends?
Only through, only through the...
No, no, they're only obligated to go to the southernmost part of the intersection.
Right, right, because then, okay.
But they've said, this is part of the discussion.
Because the intersection is really part of the project, so at some stage, you've got to get through the intersection.
So, they did, if I could finish. So, they did say that they are willing to finish the intersection. And so, that's why, that's why we're giving them proposals on redoing the intersection in a way that's more acceptable to us from a safety perspective, a multi-modal transportation perspective. But they are only obligated, and they made it very clear, and Representative Walco made it, they're obligated to go to the southernmost part of the intersection.
Does County Road 39 end when it becomes Main Street? How does...
It becomes our property at that point.
So, that's the end of County Road 39, or it becomes Village Main Street, whatever.
Not the village boundary, but closer to the intersection.
Yeah.
I would also add that, given that we're very seriously looking at moving the entrance from traditional entrance, which we all have acknowledged that it's a very important safety issue there, and so, they, the county, and I would say Southampton Town agrees with all of us on that, and that's, I think, another reason why they're willing to go into the intersection and go a little bit further because they understand how important that could be as a solution.
Got you.
Yeah, I'll just say that road infrastructure, the lights, the changed entrance, the rest of it, is suburbanization, further suburbanization of the village. This is my opinion, that's all. And there'll be stripes, there'll be lines, and it's just more hardscape, and what these gentler curves and things like that tend to do is speed up cars. I hear what you're saying about narrowing the lanes, because that does work, but my bigger concern is that Jermaine, Jermaine itself is already problematic, and you don't want to turn it into a raceway. You don't want to further encourage that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, from my two cents, it's just the hardscape and the infrastructure that I find like, oh, please, you know, we can go to Port Jefferson if you want to see that.
Yeah, I do think that, you know, given the amount of traffic, and I know we had some study, we had some traffic counting at the intersection, and the numbers were kind of way beyond what I think any of us had imagined. Doing something with the park entrance, having this opportunity, which is probably once-in-a-generation opportunity to do something there, I think is a good thing. The idea that it becomes a bicycle pedestrian entrance, I think is wonderful because you maintain the look and feel and moving the entrance. Question is, how does the park feel about all of this as far as this cut through? Which doesn't make sense.
The park, the park is amenable to it. They, you know, this was, we originally walked through this, trustee Kane, myself, Ed Hollander walked through this with park board members and came up with this alternative entrance. It's the only other entrance that would work for the park. No entrance would really work conceivably off of Jermaine well. So, what's really happened is this County Road 79 project has given us the opportunity, and in part because, you know, they designed an intersection that would have blocked the existing park entrance, gives us the opportunity to say, hey, would the county consider funding and constructing in parts a new entrance and changing their own designs at some extent? At first, they were a little reluctant, but each subsequent conversation, they've shown, you know, a very engaged, constructive approach to listening to ideas, and the back and forth has been very good.
Yeah, but you're not suggesting that this intersection pre-dated current entrance to the park. In other words, this is surely not engineered by the state of New York. What's here now? The park was built for dirt roads, and that was the entrance to the park. Way back. I'm talking one as good.
Yep.
So, to say that they're trying to re-engineer this intersection after the fact is a little specious, I think, because I'm still, I'm just, I'm going to harp on this, but I don't like the aspect of the suburbanization of our roadways, and that's it. I think it just tends to add more traffic.
But I can jump into and respond to that.
Yeah.
What you see there in terms of the bones of the intersection that were done by the county, they told us, all they did was look, they did sort of an overhead visual of the intersection that is now. If you think of it, there are large painted triangular sections.
Right.
So, to create lanes, but it's presently a lot of asphalt. All they did was said, we will make it pedestrian, more pedestrian-friendly by raising those into...
All they did this time.
On that, what you see right there, that was their plan to put in these raised triangular pieces on top of what is presently painted. So, it's not a changed intersection from their perspective. I don't think it's appropriate yet. I sort of, personally, I don't think it's appropriate yet. But by raising intersections so you could walk across safely, and trustee Hay referred to it, they effectively cut off the ability of cars to turn off of the road into the entrance.
Yeah, I believe they call them pedestrian refuge areas.
Yes.
That's right.
Exactly right.
My question also is that the war, that it doesn't affect the war memorial there, right? No, it doesn't.
No, it does not.
Correct.
Right. I have, Ed and I, we've discussed this, but I just want to get it into the record. This road through the park, two things, who pays for it? And secondly, what sort of, what's the time horizon on this? So, if a decision has to be made that someone's going to pull the trigger on this, then the park would need to be in a position of knowing that if their existing automobile entrance is going to be moved, that there are funds available to execute this. So, I'd just like to tease that out a wee bit.
Let's start with the timing first. The county told us in this most recent call that they plan to take this out to bid in 2026.
In 20, to bid in 26?
Yes, and so...
Okay, so that means drawing, like, they need to have this plan?
They still haven't done engineer, full engineering drawings.
Right, so they're a ways away.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there initial interest? Other, I mean, the road needs paving.
It's in there, either in presentation, it's safety. So, sidewalks, continuing what work was done south of Skell Hall sidewalks on County Road 79.
Sidewalks on both sides.
Yes, and then these bike paths, as well as then...
Stormwater runoff and the environmental piece.
Yep.
So, and...
So, they're doing this one way or the other.
But then to speak to the park entrance.
The question is, how far to the intersection do they come?
Well, that's what we just talked about, going north to that, yeah. There's a lot more work to be done.
Exactly. So, for the park entrance, part of the conversation we had...
Before we make, before this is finalized.
Exactly.
And you said that you would leave, in theory, you would leave the arch and the pillars there, just the other side.
It becomes a pedestrian bicycle entry and exit, and, you know, a different, a path, it remains there, but it's no longer a vehicle traffic road. In terms of the park entrance, the new proposed park entrance, part of the conversation we had with them on this past Thursday was our last meeting. We wanted to get these, and these were done literally Wednesday afternoon before the meeting, so we were all kind of seeing them at almost the same time. And they're still digesting it, is to see if they're willing and are interested to create this, because along the way, they're going to be creating driveway accesses for homes, for businesses, and is this something they'd be willing to create as part of their project? And they didn't say no, which was important. Now, they don't, they did say that they would not be building the road itself.
Into, in through the park.
But they could build the entrance, and they even...
To a little point inside.
Yes, and the crosswalks, the bike paths, you know, they might be able to do some of that infrastructure, because one of the things they also showed us was, because we spent a fair amount of time discussing this, was their head of, their head of public works or traffic, I'm not sure what his title is, showed us a drawing that he did of relocating what's currently street parking as a drive-in segregated piece of parking as well. So, they're doing some work and thinking about this, too.
Right. Who owns the land? Right now, is it not a very safe situation when parents with their kids are visiting the playground, and they pull head in at the park facing west?
Exactly.
And then they're reversing back onto 114 at the traffic light.
That's the piece that they drew that would make it safer.
Right.
We were fine with, both the park and the village were fine with just taking away the parking entirely there.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I don't really want to spend like all, this whole meeting on talking about this conceptual plan. I think that you guys have been doing the work, the committee has been working on this, and there's been interaction. I don't know when the timeline is that the county wants to finalize this, before they go out to bid.
So, the next, I'm not sure either. It will be sometime, I suspect, in '25. We're talking about the spring of '25, probably.
So, I think we can, we can have a work session, have public input, because we're making decisions that are going to affect the entrance to the village, the entrance to the park. We should hear from the public on this before we commit to anything.
I'll say the next steps is, we will not have another meeting with the county until January. In between, the county highway superintendent, as well as our traffic consultant are going to meet, just to talk some familiar engineering issues about these proposals.
Okay. Well, this is great first step, to have something to look at and...
Something to think about.
Thank you. Next thing is public water access. Today, we met with H2M, which is one of the other engineering firms we brought on board the last meeting, to help us with public water access. In their proposal, one of the reasons we wanted to meet with them before we sent them on their way to do the, all the public access work is, I think, if you remember in the last meeting, I said in their proposal, they did not specifically say that they would do the property line demarcation for us. We wanted them to do that, because there are some properties that we think there is some encroachment. We want to be clear about it.
GPS survey.
We need the actual surveys to make sure... We, we need the actual surveys to make sure. And, and so we're, so they've agreed to do that. We asked them to send us an increased cost of the proposal. We have not received that as of this point. It did. And so.
12,600?
Additional incremental? Okay. And so that.
Oops, sorry. 12,600.
And that's for all of the properties? So we don't necessarily think all of them need to be done?
1,200 per location at seven locations.
Okay. So then part of what we were talking about, there's seven locations. A couple of them are probably in dispute, maybe a few even. Those are the ones we certainly want to make sure we have property marking done to. I'd like to, if we could, so we don't have to wait till the January board meetings, approve them to do that in addition to the work they're going to start this month.
I'm sorry, Kate, how much is it per?
Eight, seven.
Eighteen hundred.
Oh, eighteen, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we'll try to limit the number of locations that it's needed at?
I think we need to have a firm determination on what exactly, which properties are being surveyed before we can make a decision instead of just say randomly approve.
Well, we have seven that are already approved for surveying. The question is, this is just which ones will.
Do we, do we know which ones we want to do or?
Should be three, maybe four max.
It'll be three or four of the seven that we want to have property markations put in place as well.
How many more are there beyond seven?
There're probably two, there're two more that we've identified already. There's one on Otter Pond. And there's one on, but we haven't contracted with them to do that stuff yet. We're, we're just sticking to the initial seven, trying to get, understanding what the full scope of this is going to be. And there's one more in the near Steinbeck House.
Yeah, I would be, I would be okay with approving up to four right now. And then if more needed, we'd, we'd have to come back.
That makes sense. I'm with that. So that would be seventy.
Seven thousand two hundred.
Dollars to do four.
So we put that as a maximum.
Four that are kind of in dispute, so to speak.
Potentially, that we think there's been.
We need to get that property back.
And if we can get more comfortable, it's only three, not four, then.
Right.
Exactly. Fancy this.
So we'll need a motion.
We need a motion to approve seventy-two hundred dollars to survey the lots that are in question, up, which is up to four.
I'd like to make a motion to increase the contract with H2M by up to, by no more than seventy-two hundred dollars to do permanent property line demarcations on up to four properties if needed.
So moved.
Oak Tree Monuments, right?
Yeah. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, Gene. What else do you got, Deputy Mayor?
That's it.
Okay. That brings us now to trustee Korsch with the Sewer Department, Village Grants Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the Village Grants. It's quite time of the year for grants. We've no, we have one application pending. We have no applications that are being prepared at the moment. The pending application is DC State of, State of New York for, I think it's five point seven million dollars, which would be for phase two of the, of the sewage treatment plant service area extension, which would take us down Main Street. That application was put in earlier this year and normally we get to hear about that sometime in December, though it has known to be later. Once the new year comes in, we'll be looking at lots of other grants. So if anybody has any projects out there that are grant worthy, please let me know. We'll be going back to the local CPF for more water quality grants and continuing our project with the sewage treatment plant. The, so that's the end of my grant report. As far as the plant goes, this month, the total gallons received was just over two million. We removed thirty-four thousand gallons of sludge. DMR reports were forward down twelve oh six and Suffolk County next inspection will be the eleventh of February. And as always, the New York State DC inspection is open. We have no complaints. General summary of operations, the wastewater treatment plant running well under all permitted levels. And we're now operating on just two of the five available basins. We had Eagle Control, who's contractor for us, out to replace and calibrate the dissolved oxygen, oxygen sensor in basin number one and replace the decanter actuator on basin number one as well. The flow from October through November was decreased by a hundred and forty thousand gallons. So you see as the, as the village doesn't seem that quiet, it's funny, but the, the, the flow is down a hundred and forty thousand gallons. I'd like to mention again, I, I just mentioned this last month, that we're working on the plant needs upgrades. We talked about, we had some people talking about the aroma coming out of the plant and the idea that if we could get some negative pressure inside the two sludge tanks, we said that we removed thirty-four thousand gallons of sludge so that that would help enormously in, 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 in abating that problem. There were other, I, there are other areas of the plant that could use some improvement and we need to be able to develop a better financial basis for the plant. It's nineteen seventies vintage, does a great job. It runs twenty-four seven, three, you know, fifty-two weeks of the year. So I had talked about the idea last month and I just want to mention it again, so it doesn't come as any surprise to anybody in January of introducing a small water quality surcharge on every property in the village that's not connected to the plant. Charles and I have been working on this and going through the tax rolls and coming up with some options that obviously they would, have a public hearing on this and.
It's required to actually serve notice on all impacted property owners.
Right.
Subject to village law, as well as hold a public hearing. And then any resolution authorizing that is subject to a referendum.
Right. Okay. Question is, well, we can, I don't want to get into the weeds on this. We have too much. We'll wait till January, but I just want to just mention it again as we go along on every meeting. So January, we'll have some, some hard numbers to look at and we'll be able to discuss it in greater detail so that it is, everything is done in, in good time for our budget resolutions in June. So we have time to go through this process and I'll leave it at that for now, Mayor.
Okay.
Finally, everything from the zoning board of appeals, we have no issues there. That board, I think, is working pretty well.
Excellent.
They have a good team there. It's an excellent board. And so that will conclude my report, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Korsch. That brings us now to trustee Plum with Public Works Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The fall leaf collection has continued. Well past the deadline, I might add. There's still vacuuming up leaves and I think they've got them all, but these stick going out above the limits, nab them all. How many cruises is at the Harbor Mather with removing and stalling all dinghy docks for the repair? My own, of my sunfish was the last boat at Haven's Beach. I just want to.
I was going to tease you about that.
Winterization of the irrigation system has been completed. Asphalt patching and repair continues and the boost continue clean, full cleanup in the village parks. Department of Public Works would like to thank Jackson Dodd's for their hard work and dedication, volunteering for the monumental task of placing all the lighting Christmas tree on Main Street as well as lighting the Christmas tree on Lone Rock. They deserve a round of applause.
Absolutely.
And as far as the HP, the historic preservation, architecture review board, what, what we're going to do is we're going to have, now that we have Dave Harvey on as an architectural consultant, this will be advertised an hour early before the meeting, means typically five at four. The, the members are going to meet and discuss the applications that are coming up in that meeting. So we don't get, they're not looking at them for the first time and they'll have a chance to comment. And everybody's sort of up to speed on what's coming up. And then also just as a side note, Randy Koloff was the proprietor at Black Swan Antique, bought a horde of old slides of properties around the village. It was from a barn, which I have a feeling was on Amity's Street. And anyway, he's offered to catalog those and have them available for the HPRB to look at. And because a lot of them are individual buildings, but you can also see other buildings in the background and stuff like that. So he's going to.
That'll be great.
He's going to make a list of what, they're really cool pictures, mostly from the twenties. And, but that'll be a big help.
Be great historic record.
Your context. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. On, on that note, I did receive from April Gornick a, she had, we had taken the photographs out of the fire museum and she had, had got them. I have a zip drive with the pictures on it. They've been preserved.
Good.
And so I, she, that was dropped off at Village Hall and I have that. So just to let you know, also on the clock that's on one fourteen and Washington Street across from the beer and soda, all the parts are in. They're going to hopefully this week put everything together. There's new lighting that's going inside the clock. So that project should be done relatively soon. We're still waiting for the clock that goes on. Yeah, they're building it. They're in the process of building it.
Thank you.
But thank you, Bob. So that brings us to trustee Kane with the Building Department, Harbor and Docks and Harbor Committee.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt something? I, I got, Mary Ann sent me some Tibet Environmental Action Committee and I, and I forgot. I'm sorry. They've, they've been, they've almost one thousand two hundred and fifty pounds have food waste have been diverted from the dump where they've collected at the various spots. Thanks to the board for approving the fifty thousand dollar grant from Clean Energy Communities. They're going to do a heating and air conditioning, so Village Hall generates subject confirmation. And the edit will conclude various potential energy efficiencies that might be done in this building or elsewhere. The committee remains wary, very concerned about the presence of construction and trade vehicles parked on sidewalks. We're, I think we know about this. And that's it. The, there's, so we have metal roofs, but we're working on that, reflective quality metal roofs. Thank you. Sorry.
Thanks. Thank you, trustee Plum. Trustee Kane, would you like to give your report?
Sure. Good evening. For the Building Department, I'm going to start there. For the month of November, it was sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-four thousand. That actually was thirty percent below last November. But as Charles had mentioned earlier, we're running at a significant pace of over forty-two percent ahead of last year. So when we look at, for the month of November, within the Building Department, there were ten permits issued, building permits, sixty-six inspections, eleven notices of violation and one stop or quarter. So that's for the Building Department. For the Office of the Fire Marshal, there were twenty-one fire safety inspections, twenty-five numbers of violations, five special event application reviews and five tree removal inspections. So just to give everyone an update on, on those kind of, that kind of work that they're doing. And then in North Haven, we continue to assist them and followed up on four general patrols and three investigations. I'm going to move now to Harbor Masters. As trustee Plum mentioned, all the village docks and moorings and all the boats have all been removed. He gets to be the last one. For the docks, you know, as we go into the winterization, there's been a lot of work in that the dinghy docks were removed from the water, placed at the Breakwater Yacht Club. Harbor Master Borey and Durie removed the wooden decks. They begin to redecking them in the next couple of weeks and B dock was dismantled to be ready for the winter. The ice eaters have all been placed on docks A, B and double B, Marine Park, Marine Park Basin. So even though it's quiet in the water, they've been extremely busy. And was also mentioned that both Harbor Masters have been busy taking in the applications for next season's contracts. So they're going to be busy on that. And then the seasonal boater contracts, as we said, were sent out. And there was, the big thing that we'd really want to talk about is A Dock. But for one second, I'm just going to review the numbers for the month of November. It's, it's very small. It's just one thousand, less than two thousand dollars. That's about the same as last year. And we were running about eight percent ahead of last year. So the total number year to date is two million, oh, thirty-four, seven eighty-two from the docks. It's just, it's good to, for everyone to understand how much revenue comes in from the docks. So now for A Dock, which is something that we want to really just introduce the concept of the design. Now, Kate, do we have? Okay, great.
We, we have a presentation on that.
Right. So what I just wanted to share with everyone, this is really for us to replace A Dock and the water breaker where this work would be, would begin in November of two thousand twenty-five. So last summer, it was approved that LKMA came in as an engineering firm and did a testing and feasibility study and then shared with us these conceptual drawings with the Harbor Masters are going to walk us through. And they did these drawings and estimates. So the goal will really be to gain the approval and to begin this process. So with that, I'd like to ask the Harbor Masters to step up and.
Well, we, we have a presentation later on, so I don't think it's necessary now. We have, it's on, on a discussion item. Isn't that correct?
No, not that.
Yeah.
That's almost a discussion item?
Yeah, that's a discussion item. Sorry. You're right.
No.
Yes, it is.
Yep. It's a discussion item because we'll just discuss it tonight and then look to.
Yeah. We'll, we'll bring them up and during the discussion items and they can make the presentation.
Perfect.
Is that it?
Uh, yep.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the department committee reports.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Korsch. So those in favor?
Right.
Posed. So moved. That brings us now to public comments, fifteen minute public session. Input for comments and questions, limit three minutes per speaker concerning the treasurer's report and the department reports you just heard. Would anybody like to comment? No? Nobody on Zoom? Okay, that brings us to introduction. We have a resolution setting a public hearing on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM to consider a local law placing Village Code, Chapter eighty-five assemblies, mass public, application timeframes. I need a motion to introduce.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. And do you want to go over this briefly, counsel?
Just briefly, this is a local law which will replace the existing assembly mass public law and the SAG Harbor Code. And some of the major changes or significant changes are that the, this will impact or regulate assemblies or special events that will take place in whole or in part outdoors as well. So it can, as long as some part of the event is outdoors, it will be regulating that as well. There's a change, the current law regulates special events with seventy-five people or more. This will be reduced to fifty. So now you'd be regulating events with fifty people or more. Also, the application timeframe, which is kind of what initiated this whole thing, is going to change from thirty days before the event to now it's required to be submitted no less than sixty days before the expected date of the event. This local law, if enacted, will also regulate special events. So it'll allow for special events to occur on multiple days if the board sees that that's appropriate. I don't believe that's permitted in the current code. And then also residential zoning districts, because of the reduction in the number of people, it would allow two special events where one is only permitted right now.
Okay.
So those, those are some of the major highlights.
And I also say that it also creates a little bit more specificity of the type of special events that could be permitted. The code, the current code's kind of a blunt instrument. It's just regulates based on the number of people. This allows for a little bit, a different standards, different permitting fees for residential, commercial, for use of public parks and open spaces for a special event, as well as for parades, runs and walks that require even more resources. Each one has proposed separate fee structure as well. And, and this is based on the East Hampton Village Code. So it's, it's modified from that, but we relied heavily on that. I just want to thank the chief for being involved with this, Mayor, trustee Kane, and especially Bruce Scovani for helping to drive this.
Okay, that brings us to our now discussion items. First is.
Do we have to vote on that?
We already did, didn't we? Outdoor dining and the licensing application. Who's making this presentation? So we wanted to discuss this.
Not really a presentation, but a discussion. So what is in the board package is an updated application for a license. The application again is a process to, so what is, what, what it calls for is, and Bruce, if you can come up and clarify everything I make a mistake on, that would be helpful. And Jean, if you could do the same. It's really to, and John Shokas here, and this is, so these applications now will be enforced and managed. It's really to, and John Shokas here, and this is, so these applications now will be enforced and managed. By Bruce and built before the planning board each year. So each year, the license was being extended to an annual license, full calendar year. Not trying to figure out what season is, especially when you have a nice hot, you know, Indian summer like we did this year. It requires, the application itself is pretty straightforward, pretty simple. It just requires them to put it in there, an outdoor layout. There's a fee structure associated with the number of seats on village property they want to use. And each year they have to submit the application for review. Any changes, of course, would be noted. And this goes to first the Building Department, ultimately through the Planning Board. And then to the trustees, once it's been vetted through them. Is that true? The term of the process, okay. It's really just implementing a process that's in place, a little bit with a little bit more clarity, but that was relaxed during COVID.
I think that before you speak, before we implement it, something like this, I would like to get some feedback from the businesses and. And also inform them of what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it. Before we just implement something that's going to affect them. I think that it's a, we do need to, you know, make sure that things are safe and that they're regulated properly. But we do need to hear from them and we do need to keep them informed.
I have one question. During COVID, if my memory serves me, we relaxed parking requirements by allowing people to put. Tables and chairs on areas that were traditionally used for parking. Is that going to be unwound or has that now become part of?
That puts, well, one, so. Let me start off by saying nothing in the code has changed at all. There's no changes whatsoever. There's a couple amendments. On the application itself, and that's it. So the ones that were lax during COVID, as far as parking and everything. That's going to be looked at by Planning Board and the Building Department as well.
Okay.
So yes, that will be looked at.
And if, you know, parking is such a hot issue, we just had our express session this week, which I think was pretty interesting for everybody involved. If someone's permit is predicated on that premises providing a certain amount of parking spaces. And that, and if they're now proposing to put table outdoor dining in that location. Is that something that then is within the purview of the Planning Board to decide? Or is that tied to their C of O of the restaurant?
So there's two separate regulations happening here. One is the license agreement. Which you're issuing to restaurants because they're using village property, right? And that's, I think, that what, what Bruce is suggesting changing some of the application for. And they have to get a hold harmless and ensure insurance to protect the village if something happens. And. That's for the area, using the actual area to put tables and chairs out. Then there's a separate section of the code. Which is three hundred dash eleven point seventeen. It's a special exception permit approval, which. Is considered really an approved use as long as you meet the standards of that permit that are listed in three hundred dash eleven point seventeen. And that is a permit that's issued for, by the Planning Board. For, along with a site plan approval for allowing designated outdoor dining for a specific restaurant.
How about the parking aspect?
And that's where the parking comes into place. It has a regulation, regulations with respect to parking. Let's see, the number, it regulates the total number of seats. It says that outdoor dining shall be accessory to the principal use, which shall be an indoor restaurant. Let's see, I know it talks about, it talks about the hours of operation, trash refuse.
And so one of the, one of the things this allows us to do and to comment on it too, that the. The overall occupancy of the restaurant shouldn't change by outdoor dining.
Yeah.
So the plans would include both, you know, if you've got an indoor. The requirement under the new application is to submit an indoor plan and your outdoor plan. And, and any changes in the indoor plan to accommodate the outdoor seating would be reflected in the indoor plan. And that gives, that gives the building inspector the opportunity to not only approve and the planning board to approve, but to monitor. To make sure people are compliant.
But in the initial, sorry, there's.
Section E, any outdoor dining shall not, where applicable, absent compliance with the parking requirements of this chapter. And will find all the permanent content that is served during official seating capacity of the restaurant. And any special exception use, approval, absence of compliance, shall require removal of indoor seats equal for the number of outdoor seats, which is regulated by the bar.
Right. But if a restaurant was given a CFO for a certain number of seats. Based on the amount of parking they could provide and.
They can't increase those.
Can they take away those, some of that parking to put tables and chairs on, even if they, but my point is you could.
Parking is specifically approved pursuant to a site plan approval from the Planning Board. It cannot be changed without going back to planning and amending that site plan approval.
Okay. Alright.
So if the parking is designated parking for, based on the number of seats. And it was approved by the Planning Board pursuant to a site, you can't change that. And this board has no authority to change that. You have to go back to, an applicant would have to go back to the Planning Board to amend that.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Just to clarify that too. So there are, so CFOs are also based on parking.
Yes.
So if I go and do my measuring, I can say a hundred people can sit in here. But one of the stipulations being parking requirements, the CFO may set the maximum occupancy at eighty, for example.
Okay.
So within the CFO, within the CFO, the parking is a requirement, is a fact.
And historically, you know, we had different ways of assigning parking to, to restaurants in the village. For a long time, you had fountain spaces, you could buy, pay into a fund, going back. Twenty or so years.
Well, there are grandfather spaces.
Grandfather spaces, so.
There was a change to the restaurant parking. I don't know what year.
But this is not intended to change any of that. It doesn't change anything.
Right. I guess my only question is, is putting tables and chairs on parking spaces.
And again, that's gonna be.
And that's what comes down to the planning board and to Bruce. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Unless this board is interested in changing those regulations with respect to the special exception. You know, you would have to take a look at that.
I think that parking ties into, you know, obviously ties into the seating and the village and. But it also is going to limit business in the village. In other words, you're only going to be able to. Conduct so much business, which I, I, I'm against that to limiting. I mean, yes, it has to be managed properly. It has to be safe. But if. You know, right now, is there a problem? Do we have any issues in the village with the way businesses are operating and seating? I mean.
I think the, with the. With the way it got lax during COVID and not really coming out of it. As far as this particular issue, yes, because they're more likely to overoccupy. I mean, there's places that are, have planning board approval for the restaurant on another spot. They're using one or two more. So.
Is it a safety issue?
Not only a safety issue.
It is a safety issue?
Absolutely is a safety issue because then you're blocking, you're blocking egress. Handicap spots become an issue. And not only that, the sewer plant becomes an issue because then you're overtaxing sewer plant. So it has a lot to do with safety at that time and also the infrastructure of the village itself.
And as it stands right now, are businesses taking advantage or are they overdoing it? Is it becoming an issue? Is it a problem? That's my question.
Yes.
It is.
In many different facets.
Has anybody reached out to the Chamber of Commerce or had a discussion or said anything to these or put them on notice that they're?
Well, the, the thing that this is, again, because it's been.
Yeah, I think we should.
We've been going with that mindset, let's say. This is more to say, here's the code, this is the code that's always been in place. We're going to now abide by it and we're going to enforce it.
I think that's the same with all the code. Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's not, it's no change unless. A business has done something that they were allowed to do at one time, but it wasn't a permanent approval, let's say.
It may be something this board wants to do is, is to reach out to. Business owners or have a work session or something like that to discuss it and put people on notice. That it might be an issue. It's up to the board.
And the reason to do it now is because businesses, multiple businesses come to me. For the past couple of years, hey, what about this spot for outdoor dining? What about this spot? Whatever it is. Yes, you have to go to the planning board. Next thing you know, they submit, we've had a temporary outdoor dining thing. They say they designate one area, they're using the other two. I go to enforce it, I enforce it for that night, next weekend fine, following weekend, bam, it's back at it. And this gives you, look, this is your, you know, this tells them this is your planning board approval. This is what it is. And again, it's not to limit them. It's just to say that. What you're allowed is now enforced.
And it's also.
I mean, we're not looking to take away seats. I'm looking to take away seats.
Well, that's what's gonna, that's what's gonna happen.
Occupancy of restaurant that's doing one hundred and forty people at a time.
Right.
It's definitely, they may be doing great that night, but those extra sixty people. At, let's say, three times a night, what are they doing with the sewer plant? What are they doing with parking? What are they doing to the streets themselves?
I think we need to have a discussion with the, with the businesses in the chamber. And, and put them, let them know that what we're looking at and. What that they need to take a look at their, what they've been approved for by planning. And if they're going outside that scope, they need to reapproach planning. And, and ask for. You know, what they're doing. If it's, if it's permissible.
Trying to do, but to blanket it now, to put everybody from the get going and even playing. To say, look. Every business has to do this. That's it.
Every business who wants outdoor dining. And so that's what this process is.
Okay, so from a general perspective, we have businesses that are in the village that are conducting, there's seating, there's restaurants. Have we had issues at the sewer treatment plant? Are you being overwhelmed or, I mean, we are keeping up with the grease traps?
Well, that's the other, yeah, I mean, we are, we are, it's, as you describe it, is you can go out and, and. Visit everybody and then all of a sudden grease trap compliance is great for a period, but as soon as you stop doing that. It just, it just waxes and wanes. It causes issues in the plant operationally. I mean, I've been talking about grease traps. For years here, we changed, you know, we tried to put more teeth in the legislation last year and that has helped. But, you know, we're a small community. We can't run it like, you know, we, we can't be in everybody's, on everybody's premises every day. We really think it's fair to expect that considering this plant underpins the. The entire operation of the village and our prosperity and the, and the idea that we can have these restaurants. That I think people, it needs to be brought to people's attention. And to your point, it's all incremental. It's like, hey, it's only a couple of seats here, a couple of seats there. But you add it all up, it's like having another restaurant in town that nobody's ever considered.
This is on for discussion purposes, which is what we're doing, which is great.
Yeah.
I do think we should. Give this to all of the local businesses who have used this in the past, have used outdoor dining class. Invite them in for a conversation about this. But like with, you know, traffic violations, parking violations. Creating a clear process with clear requirements that, that they're applying for and getting approved makes enforcement easier. Fire marshal can't be everywhere. We can enforce everywhere, every week. And, and I've seen occasions in this village. I don't want to call out a business where they've used indoor dining, parking dining, street dining, village property dining. They've got people double parking, triple parking in front of this on Main Street.
Yes.
Um, holding up traffic and their indoor seating has not been taken away. They've been overcapacity. Where I've gone in for a piece of takeout. And I've had to wait fifteen minutes just for somebody to take the, the food off the shelf. It was completely overflowing with people. Those kinds of situations are abuse and they're a safety issue for the village. So it's just a matter of getting them to do what they say they're going to do upfront. And enforce and allowing us to enforce in a relatively straightforward way. I can see like, for instance, that sign says the maximum occupancy this area, that's based on a square foot number.
Yes.
And restaurants have that as well. This is different because. If, if it's a fire code violation and the room has too many people in it, that's a much more serious thing, right, than.
Arthur's tables in front of the.
Sidewalk, there's measurements on sidewalks.
Right.
Sounds like another work session.
Is there anything else that we want to discuss on, because I would really like to speak to the businesses about this. Especially the chamber and have a discussion. Because not playing devil's advocate, but they, they, they're, these businesses are hiring people. You're hiring employees, they're bringing commerce into the village. Of course, we want it to be safe. We want it to be properly regulated. We have issues that we have to deal with.
But they all have an occupancy, right.
And I, can I suggest that we do a workshop for both this and. The special event permit, because both of those are going to affect members of the chamber. The special event permit, for example, is allowing businesses to have temporary changes of use for their premises to serve food. When approved, things like that, which currently isn't covered under our existing code. Well, yeah. So it, this is a whole, you know, these two pieces are almost companion pieces.
They're related for sure.
They are very related to, to the business community. Can we suggest, can I suggest bringing them in for a workshop?
Absolutely, we should.
And we want to try to do something. You know, before the end of this year or in January, I guess my only.
As, as they begin to plan for the summer, just like you're saying, Mayor, if they're gonna be hiring people and planning things, everyone should.
My question, because I was not informed of this, I just found this on the discussion item, was what was, what was the motivation to have this discussion at this time? That's, that's basically the mayor's question.
To get back to the code as it was written and keep all the establishments. Again, on an even playing field and say, you know, look, this is what you've always been allowed to do. The previous few last years are.
I do remember.
He's got a slot, is that what you're saying?
I do remember years ago, we would not issue outdoor dining permits if there were any violations in the restaurant. And that was one of the conversations we had. Of the evening when it came up in front of us, we would check with the Building Department if there were violations on the, that were still open. And the permit would not be issued till all violations were closed. And there were, some of them were pretty simple. It weren't called big deals, but it had to be. And that was a great way of getting every restaurant at the time. And I'm not sure if we still do that when we. It was more discussion about outdoor dining.
Well, that's what, right, well, the, the permit application used to be more formal. There's what it was.
Okay.
I mean, like right now, the board doesn't.
I think we should set.
The license issuing.
No.
Anymore.
No, we used to.
But it's, right, and it's. It's just going back to the way.
I think we need to set up another work session and bring the businesses in and have a discussion with them and. Get some feedback, especially from the public. How does, how did the village residents feel about this? Also.
Okay, I think.
Anything else? That's it. That brings us to A Dock replacement as a discussion item.
Good evening. So. We were tasked with an A Dock replacement. We've reached the end of its lifespan. So as trustee, trustee Kane mentioned, we met with Ellen and Kay to come out and be a mentor of A Dock. And at the same time, we also were discussing the cables, the forty three cables that are seated to the south right on West Water Street. They've been, they've reached the end of their lifespan as well. You know, ever since that bulkhead was put in there, they've become less desirable because we get a high tide, people are wading through the water. We had a couple of complaints where people jumped out of their boat during the summer and they. They cut their feet on the rocks, you know, in the water. So. Meeting with Ellen and Kay, we discussed what our current inventory is. And we also discussed. The really large need to, our village waiting list, our, we almost have fifty boats on it. They're small boats that we can't fulfill with the slips that we have. So this was the conceptual plan that they came up with. It was a replacement of A Dock, which is on the right of twenty slips. And then we have a new floating dock coming off of where Water Street, where B Dock is as well. And where would be a total number of slips of seventy eight. We currently have sixty three spaces between A Dock and the cables. And this would give us an additional fifteen spaces. The great thing about it too is that, you know, Water Street really is, the cables are not fully utilized of the forty three spaces we have right now. You have about seven or eight vacancies in there. So, and, and that's where the waiting list of residents and non-residents.
They're not, it's not appealing. They're not appealing.
There's two hundred people on the waiting list and.
They won't even take.
None of them are taking those cables. So. We came up, they, you know, we went back and forth. We basically discussed what we need and we really focused on the small boat. Twenty four feet and under is mostly the addition of these slips, starting at eleven to sixteen feet. And going up to about, we have a few spaces for up to twenty five to twenty six. And you can see the only big boat would be at the end of A Dock on. The east side there in yellow, and that's a thirty foot vessel at the time. The east side there in yellow, and that's a thirty-foot vessel at the time. Uh, that we have to announce. So that would be the biggest boat. Uh. That's really about it as far as, uh, you know, if you're with about.
I also had seen a drawing where we were doing a walkway. That we're incorporating a walkway in this project, because the bulkhead's being replaced. Which basically goes to where the, the ramp is by A dock. Uh, uh, you have a, we don't have a rendering of that.
We do.
You do?
We do.
Which is something that we had thought the, the, right. Which could be part of this project also.
You mean for people to walk?
To walk, yeah.
Well, when we looked at, we looked at how, um. You know, that whole area of Long Island Avenue, it's just, it's really not safe. Whether it's pedestrians, bikes, and then vehicles. I mean, it's, it's just, um. Something we had talked about, so. That could be another thing that we could add in, that we would replace both the bulkhead there and add a boardwalk. Um.
Sorry, it's just loading, it's too heavy.
I think it's an excellent plan to, uh, get rid of the pulleys and. Get the extra fifteen spaces to, we have residents that are on a list that they should be able to take their. Boat and, and enjoy their, the harbor.
Plus the immediate shore line would be more visually appealing, because all those posts would be gone, all those cables.
There's just no beach left.
No.
Uh, to use the cables anymore.
Yeah. They, they told us that when they put that bulkhead twelve or thirteen years ago, they said they were gonna lose it.
They said they did.
Yeah, they, they said once that was shored up.
Then it would just wash away.
They gave it ten years, so we've got to be one of them.
How's that happen? Because the sand doesn't, I guess, act for you anymore?
So you're keeping the boat safe, but you're not having the, the normal flow.
They're, they're pilings along the floating docks, right?
So there would be pilings, uh, that are based on vessel size. Some would have, uh, eight-foot spacing, some would have nine-foot spacing, and some would have eleven-foot spacing.
Like B dock.
Yeah.
I also, I had a.
I'm sorry.
I had a conversation with Harbor Master Bory about, we talked about this, Bob, about. Looking into putting some type of amenities down there, bathrooms and a shower. There's nothing for B dock or A Dock, right? Currently. We were, so we're looking into, we talked about that also.
Easy connect bathrooms down there because it's got sewer line, goes right by.
So that's something.
Would be great to have something on that side of the west side of the village, yeah.
So Bob's looking into that for us.
So that looks great.
Uh, the only difference, A dock currently, it's a fixed dock of, uh, pilings. That proposal is a, uh, floating dock now. So those, both those options would be floating docks.
And the entrance there, which is at the top, is, that looks pretty tight.
Yeah, believe it or not, you can get a forty-foot boat through there.
You can, okay.
So we've, we've done it before, so.
But that's the same, that's the existing spacing.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Actually, the proposal is actually a little bit smaller on that space. So the proposal would be the green dotted line. Uh, that proposal has a removal of the brake order, the, uh, wave brake being removed.
See, how it's just the gray versus the green?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Is that the thing that's Anglo?
No, that's a dimension.
Be, before that.
Oh, yeah.
Inside.
Yeah. Oh, I see.
And when we talk about the materials that we would use for this, um. It's low maintenance and along.
Probably EK or something like that, um. They, they give it like a thirty or forty year shelf life, so the dock should be good for.
And services, power, water, electric, is that part of it?
We have to go over, there's gonna be some power, but I think, well, we, you know, if we do a follow with this, we can go over exactly what they did.
Sure.
For the initial plans that they gave had a lot of thirty amp service, but we really don't need. You know, we need lighting down, it was one-ten, but some of these smaller boats, we don't need that.
Right, just to hose bibs for.
Hose bibs, wash them down.
That's all, yeah.
What's the next steps? For considering this?
So, so this is the discussion and then we would bring it back next month, um, to have, um, a vote.
Do we need to go out to bed to vote to?
Oh, yes. So basically, L K M A, um. Did the feasibility study and then made this conceptual drawing and gave us estimates. We would go through the regular bidding process. And then also a big part would be figuring out funding, um, looking at potential grants.
Yep.
Um, as well as, uh, we've been in conversation with Charles to look at potential issuing of a bond. Um, you know, knowing that the revenue is behind it and, um. So, you know, this is where we, this is where we would need the support for. Whether we want to do just the dock, whether we want to do the dock and the bulkhead and the boardwalk. Um, you know, all these would come into play when we would look at the funding and, um.
I would like to, uh, have you and myself, because I go to the meetings, meet with the LWRP members. And also approach them about this. And I think there's also grants that could be available through them, so. I, I think they'll be supportive.
And, and, you know, a big part of why it's important to roll this out now, or actually having started it in the summer. Is because w- w- while we have these important steps on funding, um. Permitting is a big part, so as soon as we could have the bidding process and make the selection. Then we have to be going to the, um, D E C.
We're looking at.
Army Corps of Engineer.
We're looking at twenty-five for this.
November first of twenty-five would be the first time we could begin to remove what's existing.
Right, so what's existing is gonna be there for next season.
To give what the timeline.
Right.
He took a walk and took a look at the condition.
Yeah. I have, yeah, yeah, I agree.
There should be money out there. There should be.
I can talk to Jen Messiano and see, we can talk offline and.
I mean, because this is really, um, replacing something that's not going to be saved, so.
And I would think even if. Depending on how much grant funding is available, of course, that's a priority, but then. There is a fee structure associated with these dock fees and hopefully this would be a self-sustaining project. Regardless of how much grant funding comes in, in terms of funding the cost of the project of the life of the asset.
Right, we did, we had discussions about that. We've been.
Right.
Putting our calculators together, so.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea. Let you get your double A batteries.
Charles got spreadsheet started, right?
Well, I think it's great. I, I approve of it. I think the trustees have all taken a look at it and they, they think it's a good idea, so.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us now to parking. Wow.
Wow, who's talking about that?
I don't know.
Who put that there? Um, parking, um, I can make it up. For anybody who wasn't around this week, there was a pretty decent, uh, express session on parking, which was a great opportunity for the village to come together. Ed and I, Ron and Deas, I know Stephen, Steve Coats was there, um, sharpening his pencil. His rapier-like wit when it came to, uh. Recreating the, the events in the newspaper, but we had, we had. Yeah, we had a good conversation. We had some good ideas. It. I, I don't think there were any surprises. It, my takeaway is if there was like the top ticket item. Is employee parking for the summer of, of, uh, twenty-five. And I think that's. There's other parking issues that have to be addressed. It would be great to be able to rationalize in the village the, the times for every parking lot. We have, uh. An unbelievably widespread from twenty-four hours to three day to two hours, and it's something that has happened organically over the years. And so hopefully. We're gonna work on this in time for next summer. Um, to rationalize that, so people will know what they can, so it's easier for enforcement and it's easier for people coming into the village. Um, I think there was general consensus in the village that. You know, we pre, we predate the automobile by about a hundred and fifty years, so it's not surprising. It's an issue. Um, we have a huge amount of pre-existing non-conformity. We have two theaters in the village, which we love. But they don't have one parking space between them and they have maybe four hundred seats. So we have to work our way through this. It's a, essentially, it's a, it's a shared resource. And it would seem to me that the only real solution for a lot of this. Well, um, for long term, this will sort of dovetail in with our comprehensive plan discussions that will start in the new year. Is some form of satellite parking and some, some busing. And also to try and encourage more Ubers in town, to try and maybe create facilities for drop-off and pickup. For taxis and Ubers, which is good for everybody who's out participating in the bars and restaurants, coming and going. Um, there's a, there's a lot to discuss. I'm not going to get into it now because I guess it needs its own. Um, work session so that we can get in and hear from everybody. But I'd like to thank the newspaper for what they did, uh, last week. I think it was. It was, it was, um, very informative.
Thank you. I'd like to jump in too. So three things I'd like to emphasize that we, we are hope to address by. Next summer season is remote parking for employees, um. And the school has already reached out. We've spoken informally that they're, they're willing to participate in that as well. Um, we started the process with them then, but we stopped because frankly. We couldn't get everything in place in time, uh, when we started it last year, but they're willing to engage with us on this again this year. Um, we'd want to look again at, um, what we talked about last year with the shuttle service back and forth to the village. And maybe identifying a spot within the village on Main Street for that shuttle to pull in and out for pickups and drop-offs.
Yep.
Um, that's convenient for employees. Um, and, and, and then another, to trustee Corsh's point, rationalizing the parking spaces, that map up there. Um, has about a thousand parking spaces. About five hundred of them are two-hour to three-hour. Um, another two hundred and fifty are twenty-four hours to three-day, which is completely, not completely, but virtually unenforceable. Um, that three-day or twenty-four hour parking, um, and then. Uh, the rest are paid, another two hundred and fifty or so are roughly paid. Um, so it's, you know, figuring out and, and we had, we've had conversations and just today, in fact. With the chief and we're trying to schedule a meeting with him and lady to talk about what's a rational. Um, you know, cadence for them for enforcement purposes. Um, we want to balance both enforcement. Um, making it easier to understand for all the residents, so we don't have so many different ones. Um, as well as, you know, consider, um, businessistic residents. Um, as well. They have a place to park overnight, um. Uh, and with that, though, one of the things that's really important is developing technology that we can use, an interactive map. That, that is, we can all use to click on and find out what's parking for any particular location we're in. Or, or nearby us. And, and we're hopeful that we can do that before, um. Before the summer season as well. The wifi will help with paid parking, will help with that as well. That's coming in this winter. Um, and one of the other issues, one of the other. Exactly. One of the other things that the chief raised is a possibility for some of. Like an overnight parking lot that we might have or something is, is to look at something like a kiosk. Where you, you know, it's not necessarily paid or so, but it could be that, you know, you're, you're picking up a ticket and putting it on your dashboard.
Yep.
Make it easier for enforcement. So those kind of ideas we want to explore with the chief and, and lady, um. To figure out what's the best way for them to monitor this without, because they can't be everywhere.
Right.
So that's, um, you know, that's, tho- those are all discussions in progress, um.
Has the park ever expressed any interest in having that as a source of revenue for the park that they could use theirs?
Not that I'm aware of, but I haven't raised it with them either as a, um.
Because that's a, that's a big piece of real estate.
Yep.
Sunset.
They, they do make devices for, that are play readers. That is, you could take a picture, chords, play down the time.
We, we use that already for, um, for the park mobile enforcement, but I think the conversation with the park, I mean. We have to look at everything.
They do close at night, but yes.
My, any space.
Yep.
You know, Haven's Beach, you know.
And then, and the more traffic, the more people that can park without coming into the village, the better for everybody. Um, and I think it's going to be a big issue when we get into the comprehensive planning next year, but in the meantime. We should really, I think it was discussed, we gotta do everything we can.
Any incremental step would be helpful.
And I think identifying the things that we can try to implement by next season.
Yeah.
Is key.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, and one of the things we. Eight and I both heard at, at the session was. Employee parking is something that the village chamber and business did, Chris is very interested in.
Yeah, and I think there's an understanding that we will not be able to provide. I think we're talking about four hundred cars for employees in this village. We're not going to be able to do that, but I think it's. But if we could do a hundred or a hundred and fifty, if we could start going down that road, start chipping away at it, it would at least begin to alleviate the problem.
Yep.
Did you talk about reconfiguring the bank lot? I've seen a couple.
I've seen those drawings, yeah, that's interesting. I mean, behind Apple Bank?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, again, Hollander did one that had, actually addressed the drainage issues too.
It did change the flow of traffic, though. There was, they made it one-way.
It did do that.
That's something we should look into, right?
Five spots.
We should look into that. That's another good option, yes.
I mean, and then one other thing that was brought up was the idea, do we do valet? And is that another option?
I've had companies come to me asking about that, but their, their problem is where do they put the cars?
Right.
Right.
They park.
Right, yeah.
Just, I mean, they can fit a lot more in than individuals.
Designate a valet lot that they could basically fill up and pack them into.
Right, and the only two lots that are even come close to that size is the bank lot, which we can't charge for because it's deed restricted. And then there's.
But maybe Heaven's Beach, if you had a shuttle.
Well, look, we could talk about parking all night, so. I think we should move on to action items, uh, we. Well, so, but what we'd like to do is schedule a workshop. Yes, we will do that.
So we have it.
We have a date scheduled for.
December sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Yeah.
I will, well, I can zoom that, I can't be here for that.
Okay, so moving on to action items, we already took care of the first action item, which was to appoint. Mario, his police officer. That brings us to the second. Which is a resolution to appoint Alexandra Bolseris as deputy treasurer.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Corish, so I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hale is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. We have amend resolution number eighteen. November twenty twenty-four to award sewer service expansion area. Sewer shed L to pioneer asphalt landscaping and asphalt paving. Do I have a mo- uh, motion?
I'll make that motion. That was just to correct, um, a, a smaller error considering the size of the contract.
Slightly increased.
Slightly increased by a very small percentage, just to make sure that everything is aligned. So I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Corish, so I have a second. Seconded by trustee Plumal is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Resolution authorizing mayor to sign service fee agreement for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Service award program administration, and this is for the fire department. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish, so I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor.
Aye.
So moved. Resolution authorizing budget transfers for the fiscal. Uh, year. Twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, excuse me, that was twenty twenty-five, because it was. I missed that.
Yeah.
Okay, motion by trustee Corish, seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Resolution to authorize budget adjustment, and this is, this was for the street LED light program that Charles had spoke about. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by trustee Plum, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hale is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Resolution to surplus three floating docks. I guess it's a minimum bid of five hundred dollars per dock. And we have three of them, right?
Yes. So moved.
You want to make a motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that for these three docks, the four by twenty-four. Um, and these are both, these are floating. Flotation systems and then the eight by thirty floating dock.
Okay, motion but seconded by deputy mayor Hale is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Randy Stier, president of the Sag Harbor PBA, request permission to place Santa's mailbox on Main Street beside the municipal building for the holiday season.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish, so I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Carrie Garapi, secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps, request permission to remove Michelle Severance. And Cassandra Albia, on the insurance rolls, effective immediately. Also requesting authorization for Michelle Severance to receive honorary status.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish, so I have a second.
Aye.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Carrie Garapi, secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps, requests authorization to hire the following. EMT drivers effective December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at the hourly rate of twenty-eight dollars an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by deputy mayor Hale is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Anton Hagan requests permission to operate a commercial charter from Marine Park Slip twenty-three for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five voting season.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Richard Chivoni, secretary of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, request permission. To accept the resignations of ex-chiefs Steve Miller. And James Frazier, both, I served with both these chiefs, excellent chiefs. In our department, also requesting that they be added to the honorary rule.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hale, have a second. Seconded by trustee Plumal is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Opposed, so moved, that brings us to action items, special event and special use permits. Natagosi of the Sag Harbor Inn requests permission to erect a menorah on the grassy area of Long Wharf to celebrate Hanukkah on Thursday, December nineteenth. Twenty twenty-four through Friday, January third, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corsh, so I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hale, is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, Saint Andrew Roman Catholic Church requests permission to place the nativity scene at the Civil War Monument. From Saturday, December seventh to Wednesday, January eighth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by deputy mayor Hale, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, we now have the approval of the bills, we have warrant number twenty-four and the amount of six hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-two cents. Warrant number twenty-five and the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-four and forty-seven cents. Warrant number twenty-seven, the amount of eight hundred seventy-one dollars, five hundred and three and seventeen cents. Motion to approve the payments presented in warrant number thirty, also in the amount of five hundred dollars, do I have a motion? To pay all the bills together.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corsh, so I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee, excuse me, deputy mayor Hale, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, bills are paid, that gives us a public comment session, we have fifteen minutes of. Public session input for comments and questions limit three minutes per speaker. Yes, happening.
Good evening, neighbor of sixty-eight Union Street, um sent you a brief email earlier, just um. About what I wanted to talk about here, um it's specifically about the um accessory dwellings um law. Um, so that's three hundred dash nine point twelve, so in that, um that law was um passed in uh November twenty twenty-two. There is, there was a section of that law, I'll read it here, it's uh, there's section nine, uh number B, uh says. Legally existing, pre-existing, non-conforming accessory structures may be converted to an accessory apartment. Provided it meets the New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code and the Suffolk County Sanitary Code. Conversion to an accessory apartment or adding an accessory apartment represents a conforming use and shall not re- result in. An increase in the degree of non-conformity pursuant to three hundred dash ten dot two C. The way I understood that section of the code and way, I think everybody who was in favor of this uh law understood that code. Uh, the, the code, this section of the code was that meant that, for example, you had a four hundred fifty square foot. Garage on your property, that was said it's non-conforming, maybe didn't meet, meet the setback requirements or something like that. As long as you didn't expand the envelope of that building. You could convert that building, that accessory structure into a um accessory apartment. And, you know, obviously men had to meet other aspects of the code, especially the sanitary system and parking and bringing it up to code and all that sort of stuff. But there weren't, wasn't exact, would not be any specific zoning thing wrong with doing that as far as zoning goes. Now, what has sort of come up in just in really the past few weeks is um on, I, um. Is another section of this code, which I have to say, I didn't look at, or I didn't notice when I, or at least I didn't understand it. When, when the code was introduced and we were going over it, and I think a lot of people didn't understand it, and I'm still not sure that I understand it. And that is um section, um, section three, uh, I'm getting confused with sections here, section D, uh. Number five, says all other dimensional non-conformity should not be less than seventy percent of the required lot width requirements. The way my understanding that the building department is now interpreting that is. In our twenty district, theoretically, our property is supposed to be, have a street frontage of a hundred feet, that's the minimum, right? So what this is basically saying is that if you were. So, less than seventy percent of that, in other words, less than seventy percent, then that is, makes it non, the non-conformity. Is great enough that you cannot do an accessory apartment.
Would that mean sixty-nine feet would be less than seven?
The reason why that is a problem is, is everybody in this board knows.
Yes.
Most if not, you know, many if not most properties in Sag Harbor Village do not meet that particular aspect of our twenty. So you may have a, a, like that four hundred fifty square foot garage on your property that I was just describing. No problem turning that into an accessory structure, you have room for your subject system, you can provide a parking spot, or all that's great. But your lot sixty-nine feet wide, no, you can't do it, so that is.
Well, you can, excuse me, you just need a variance from zoning board of kids.
Well, I know you need a variance.
From that standard if you don't need it, those people can't do it, I just wanna clarify that.
Okay, but, I mean, why are, you know, why are we having, people need to get a variance for that? Um, this seems like this is kind of a, 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 something in the code that really needs to be changed. Um, you know, if the intent here is to encourage people to take these. Unused or underused accessory structures and turn them into uh um accessory apartments. Um, I don't think, you know, there probably, this means dozens of people potentially having to go before the zoning board of appeals. And pay the fees and all the, um, go for all that, that uh time and, and money to, to get these things. Uh, through zoning, uh zoning board of appeals, I don't see why that's, you know, fair, and I don't think I've seen any.
Will the seventy percent, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just, first of all, as far as the fees and the time goes, I don't buy that, you wanna build in this village, you gotta play with the rules. Yes, it's inconvenient, but I'm sorry, and the other reason is that we want, we want a, some kind of limit. In other words, if we, let's say we just. Get rid of this section altogether, and theoretically, there's a lot that's thirty feet wide, I haven't said.
Well, if you can conform to everything I said, why not? I mean, you know, you have a lot of flat lot properties in the village that, yes, they're narrow on the street, you know, fifty, sixty feet wide. But they're deep, you know, a hundred feet deep, a hundred fifty deep, be deep, so you can, um.
What if you get three lots in a row that are narrow, so all of a sudden, you're increasing the density in a neighborhood and affecting neighbors. In a manner that they may never have expected.
What I would, yeah, what I would say is that, I don't really, really wanna get into a debate, or everybody's bringing up really good points, and I think. Thank you, Anthony, for bringing this to light, so that we can have these discussions.
Yeah.
We could talk to our residents about it and how they feel about it, so I would just leave it at that, maybe if we wanna re-approach this, or if we decide.
There's a lot to unpack here, so.
I really don't wanna get into a discussion about it right now, but I appreciate you bringing, yes, thank you.
And the wording is difficult, for sure, the wording is difficultly, you know, of a, um, but. I, I think also, we just need to look at the numbers and see how many lots there are, and there are also. Um, as we know, uh, some accessory dwellings that are, haven't become legal yet. That we would like to encourage that to happen.
Are, are, are you suggesting that this would only apply to pre-existing, non-conforming accessory structures?
Well, see, I'm not, that's another thing I'm not sure about, I mean, let's say you have a property, you know, sixty feet wide, but it's a hundred fifty feet long. You're, you know, you have, the, the primary structure is in, you know, is very often the case in these older properties, it's, it's all the way at the front of the property in the corner. You've got a huge backyard, you know, you have the room to um, um, put an accessory structure there, that meets all the setbacks, meets pyramid law, meets law coverage. By this, looking at the way this law is being interpreted now, you still can't build that new structure.
Yeah, I, again, I don't wanna get into a discussion about this, I think council was clear. That it's not that you can't do it, you just have to follow a certain, a different process, and I, before, I, I think we all have our opinions on this. But until we hear from the residents, and if we decide to change it, we, we're gonna need to hear from everybody.
Can I ask?
I, you bring up a good point, Anthony.
Can I ask a technical question while we have Liz here, this seventy percent we've just discussed, um, as it relates to street frontage, because that was the example. Does this apply to setback pyramid law, does it apply to everything?
We had originally looked at other, you know, municipalities when we started to draft this law, and I think part of it was a, a larger review with our planners and. Um, originally, it was also included seventy percent of the setbacks, so you had to meet seventy percent of what the setbacks were required in R twenty. To allow for an accessory apartment, and at some point in the discussion, that was removed, which is why. Um, this remains sort of on its own, which seems strange, but it was supposed to be seventy percent of lot width and setbacks as well. Um, and then that was removed after a planning study and, and, and the idea that you wanted to encourage more of these, so. It is something that the board can look at and, and decide how it wants to approach this.
And that scenario of the seventy percent.
Also a lot area restriction in the Southampton Code as well, that was not transposed to this.
Can I ask a question?
I think we're, we're past the three minutes, aren't we?
I mean.
Yes.
I, I really like to follow the procedure here.
Because we have a lot to discuss on this.
Yes.
And I think there's a lot of.
Appropriate time to do it.
Yeah, and there might be other issues with this whole effort as well, that need to be discussed in context, now that we've had some real life examples.
Anybody else wish to speak for three minutes?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corsh, so I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adjourned.
Thank you, mayor.